I have seven o'clock, we're gonna get started. Good evening and welcome to the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four regular session meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to City Council. Light system is three minutes. On our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light, and after three minutes, red light will appear. The city code identifies the procedure for dissipation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means that matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements personal to you, your business, or your organization. Copies of the ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. Prior to beginning the business portion of our meeting, Pastor FH Hank Teague with Ashbury United Methodist Church will provide invocation to council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of council to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain, even rain that may have been prayed for, and now we ask, Lord, can you give us a little break? Lord, we thank you really for the public servants who are here tonight. We pray, Lord, that your guiding hand will be upon them. As we know, your hand has been upon those paid public servants who have been a part of shaping this meeting, doing all the work behind the scenes. Continue to be with this fair city and our leadership. Blessing our time together. Blessing the time apart as we work to enact the resolutions and proceedings of this meeting and others. Gracious God, we also ask that you continue to work with our decision makers. Give them, Lord, a peace that passes all understanding. Help those who are speaking and presenting, those who are in a place of decision making, our presenters, and all who will be a part of tonight's meeting, to be slow to speak and quick to listen. And may all decisions that are made tonight truly be for the good of the people of the fair city of Newport News. And finally, Lord, whatever transpires here tonight, if there are any errors, if there are any omissions, if there are any mistakes, we pray that you'll take our fallible work and polish it as a piece of coal into a diamond. This we ask. Amen.
Amen.
You all follow me in saying, "Pledge allegiance"?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, this evening, we're gonna have two presentations with Fire Chief Wesley Rogers and staff, please join me at the podium for the presentation of the Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation. And I will say, so we got, my office received a letter from Ms. Renaya from Saunders Elementary School for Flat Stanley. So the request was, could Flat Stanley be involved in council? So do you mind if Flat Stanley? All right. Is Flat Stanley, yeah. All right. So, and actually, let me get council as well to come down as I read this. So, "Thank you, Chief and Staff, for joining me at the podium. I'll now read the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas EMS is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the EMS system consists of first responders, EM techs, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency room nurses, physicians, transmembers of the public, and other of our hospital care providers, and whereas the members of EMS teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas EMS has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including follow-up care and telemedicine, and whereas the EMS Services Week twenty twenty-four theme, honoring our past, forging our future, underscores the commitment and dedication of EMS providers who serve their communities, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of all EMS providers, now therefore I, Philip Jones, Mayor of the City of Newport News, hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Newport News, and encourage the community to observe this week with programs, ceremonies, and activities." Let's just squish it in for the photo, so just get, just get tight. Where'd Alan, Alan? Alan? Everybody good? I'll do one with Flat Stanley and then one without. Everybody good? All right, one without, Flat Stanley? Perfect. Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Just council, council, they stay here, we got one more. But I'm just gonna start it. So, at this time, I'd like to call Public Works Director Frank James and staff to the podium for our next presentation of National Public Works Week. Come on, guys, you can get close. You can get close. Y'all, y'all gonna give me a hoodie? Can I get a hoodie? Can I get, can I get a shirt? I'm like a medium in between a large. Hand this to you. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Newport News, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste system, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Newport News to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and programs in their communities, and whereas the year twenty twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, and whereas the American Public Works Association's National Public Works Week theme for twenty twenty-four is advancing quality of life for all, now therefore I, Philip Jones, Mayor of the City of Newport News, hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as National Public Works Weeks in the citizen, in the City of Newport News, and to call upon all citizens, organizations, and institutions to recognize the hard work and commitment to excellence of the employees of the Department of Public Works, as well as being an American Public Works Association accredited agency and leader in their profession." Get tight, let's squeeze. We get tight, we'll get tight. All right, Flat Stanley, stand. Awesome, thanks, everyone. Hey, we really appreciate it. Public hearings. Item E one is a request for City Council to receive public comments on the effective property tax rate as it relates to the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget. This public hearing is required by state code when a locality estimates an increase of property tax greater than one percent for the upcoming fiscal year. The city's current real estate tax is one dollar eighteen for every one hundred dollars of assessed value. The total property tax levy is anticipated to increase by two point one four percent in the upcoming fiscal year. The difference between the lower tax rate and the proposed tax rate is point zero two five dollars per one hundred, which is two point one four percent, and will be known as the effective tax rate increase. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir, there are not.
Motion to close public hearing?
So move. No, no, we don't need, we just comment.
Oh, okay. No comments, then. So I guess that we need to move and second it?
Yeah, close the public hearing.
Okay, so let's motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Move and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
And as a reminder, item E one was an item to only receive public comments on the effective real property tax rate, so there's no vote on this item at this time. Thank you, Mabel, for that. Page eight, item E two is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News and Virginia Power Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia, granting a utility easement across city-owned property located at six one zero twenty-sixth Street to facilitate installation of an underground electrical service improvement. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So move, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E three is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News and Virginia Power Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia, granting a utility across city-owned property located at five six zero Hampton Roads Center Parkway to facilitate installation of a underground electrical service improvement. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page thirty, minutes of the continued budget hearing on April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Page eighty-nine, minutes of the work session of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Page one fifty-eight, minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Page one eighty-four, ordinance amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter forty-four, Wetlands, Section forty-four, Tac three, uses of and activities on wetlands which are permitted. Section forty-four, Tac nine, public hearings procedure. And section forty-four, Tac twenty-two, appeals under stormwater ordinance. Page one eighty-eight, resolution of recognition, USS Newport News, SSN seven five zero, commissioning thirty-fifth anniversary. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items F one through F five, all inclusive.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions, page one ninety-two, item G one dash one, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G, Other City Council Actions, one. The following agenda item, along with the eight associated items, address the adoption of the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget. As council members are aware, each item mandates individual consideration. Therefore, I will present them sequentially and ask for council's action on each.
I agree. Sorry, you going?
Yes.
You done?
No, I'm gonna.
Oh, keep going, all right.
Keep going.
Excuse me, what page are you on?
I am introducing item G one one. That is the first.
G one, okay.
That is the first action related to adoption of the annual operating budget. I show that as page one ninety-five of three oh two.
One ninety-five, okay, thank you.
Item G one one is a request to adopt an ordinance reordaining City Code, Chapter forty, taxation, Article two, estate taxes, Division one, generally, Section forty dash twelve, levied amount. This ordinance affirms the current real estate tax rate at one eighteen per one hundred of assessed value for FY twenty twenty-five.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G one dash two, Mr. Manager.
Item G one dash two is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter forty, taxation, Article two, real estate taxes, Division one, generally, Section forty dash twelve, levied amount. This ordinance affirms the current real estate, real estate tax rate on mobile homes and on tangible personal property of public service corporations at one eighteen per one hundred of assessed value for FY twenty twenty-five.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Item G one dash three, Mr. Manager.
Item G one dash three is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter forty-two, revisions, water rates, and fees for routine services.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G one dash four, Mr. Manager.
Item G one dash four is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter thirty-three, sewers and sewage disposal, Article two, connections to public sewer, Sections thirty-three dash nineteen, charges.
No speakers.
Thank you. Motion to approve the ordinance?
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G one dash five, Mr. Manager.
Item G one dash five is a request to approve a resolution amending the policy regarding sewage collection systems for the City of Newport News, Virginia.
No speakers.
Thank you. Motion to approve the resolution?
Move.
Uh, I need, who seconded?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G one dash six, Mr. Manager.
Item G one dash six is a request to approve a resolution amending the cost allocation agreement between the cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, and the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads.
No speakers.
Thank you. Motion to approve the resolution?
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Item G one dash seven, Mr. Manager.
Item G one dash seven is a request to adopt an ordinance providing for the adoption of a classification and pay plan for the employees of the City of Newport News.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move.
Any discussion?
Yes, I will not be supporting this because I have supported our city manager's original budget and recommendation for pay raises and pay positions. Since that time, members of City Council have inserted their own preferences for certain, which really is not supposed to happen, certain people and who gets what and who, what the rate is and certain other things that they inserted into the budget and required the assistant, the city manager to endorse and to accept, and I do not accept them. So I will be not supporting this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I would remind council that the charter indicates that we can change line items as required and would request that all council members read said charter. At that time, please call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Against.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, six one.
Thank you. Item G one dash eight, Mr. Manager.
Item G one dash eight is a request to adopt an ordinance approving the budget and appropriate funds to operate the City of Newport News for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, inclusive. This ordinance approves and adopts the total FY twenty twenty-five operating budget at one billion, one hundred forty-two million, three hundred, seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. This funding supports the general fund, schools, waterworks, general services, and all special revenue and trust funds for one year from July first, twenty twenty-four, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I think we have to read some disclosure statements. The lawyer has given me the look, so let's start with Councilman Ely.
I, John R. Ely the third, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget as I receive a salary from the West Next for Success Foundation, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I'm not disqualified from participating in this transaction. My signed written declarations are filed with the city clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Long?
I, Clayton M. Long, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget as I am an employee of Newport New Shipbuilding, a division of Huntington Ingalls, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I'm not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, Curtis D. Bethany the third, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget as I am an employee of Ferguson Enterprises, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
I think I will finish up. I, Philip Jones, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget as my wife is an employee of Riverside Healthcare Association, which is affected by this transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed declaration is on file with the city clerk. At this time, we do have speakers. I will start with Adrian Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, Mr. Manager, come before you today to thank you for listening to our concerns and addressing our concerns. Our jobs in public safety have constant ups and downs, and every day we see both triumph and tragedy. Our success, no matter how large or small, solely depends on many things. In fact, over the years, we've been able to show that there are certain truths to our jobs. Response times matter, staffing levels matter, and our equipment matters, and our people's well-being matters. With the passing of this budget to include this public safety step plan, you have shown that you were committed to these truths, and for that, we say thank you to you all. We know that this was a hard decision, as we all have limited resources, but we know this action will help recruit and retain personnel in the future, which will ultimately save lives. We know that there is still work to do. We need your support to ensure
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Against.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, 6-1.
Thank you. Item G1-8, Mr. Manager. Item G1-8 is a request to adopt an ordinance approving the budget and appropriate funds to operate the City of Newport News for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, inclusive. This ordinance approves and adopts the total FY 2025 operating budget This funding supports the general fund, schools, waterworks, general services, and all special revenue and trust funds for one year from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. I think we have to read some disclosure statements. The lawyer has given me the look. So let's start with Councilman Ely.
I, John R. Ely III, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY 2025 operating budget as I receive a salary from the West Next Success Foundation, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I'm not disqualified from participating in this transaction. My signed written declarations are filed with the city clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Long?
I, Cleveland M. Long, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget as I am an employee of Newport News Shipbuilding, a division of Huntington Ingalls, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I'm not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, Curtis D. Bethany III, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the FY 2025 operating budget as I am an employee of Ferguson Enterprises, which is a business affected by the transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed written declaration is on file with the city clerk.
I think I will finish up. I, Philip Jones, have a personal interest in the consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget as my wife is an employee of Riverside Healthcare Association, which is affected by the transaction. However, I am not disqualified from participating in the transaction. My signed declaration is on file with the city clerk. At this time, we do have speakers. I will start with Adrian Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of council, Mr. Manager, come before you today to thank you for listening to our concerns and addressing our concerns. Our jobs in public safety have constant ups and downs, and every day we see both triumph and tragedy. Our success, no matter how large or small, solely depends on many things. In fact, over the years, we've been able to show that there are certain truths to our jobs. Response times matter. Staffing levels matter, and our equipment matters, and our people's well-being matters. With the passing of this budget to include this public safety step plan, you have shown that you are committed to these truths, and for that, we say thank you to you all. We know that this was a hard decision as we all have limited resources, but we know this action will help recruit and retain personnel in the future, which will ultimately save lives. We know that there is still work to do. We need your support to ensure that our personnel have the best facilities, equipment, relief personnel, and ultimately, a healthy retirement when their service to the city is done. But tonight, the inclusion of the public safety step plan has shown to the citizens and to ourselves two things. One, the relationship between labor and city management is indeed healthy and cooperative. And two, that your ability, your ability, excuse me, to govern through a crisis is excellent. We came to you with a problem. You listened and responded quickly and effectively. We are proud to serve the city and our citizens. We take pride in the work that we do and the care that we give. Tonight, we are proud to have you as our elected leadership. From all of us in Newport News Public Safety, thank you for choosing to support us, and thank you for taking care of our citizens. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Jessica Collins.
I figured I would have been last. I'm just here to echo everything that Mr. Manning said, too. Usually, I have a speech prepared and all these elegant words to speak my point, but I just want to really speak kind of from our soul and our heart. This has not been easy for us, and I know that it has not been easy for any of you, Chief Drew or Chief Rogers, in this. It forced us as a police department and a fire department to get together and express our needs and concerns. You guys have listened to everything we've said. You've been open to conversations. And I know for me personally, I've learned so much about city business and how different things work, not even just related to budget. So we just really appreciate your time and your effort and your understanding. And I second, again, for all of us that we just really, really, really appreciate you guys fighting it out for us and all the extra phone calls and everything you've got, even from somebody's parents, I think. So we just, again, we just really appreciate you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Ferguson?
Evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Steve Ferguson. I live at 200 Parkway in Newport News in the Central District. I'm here for two reasons. One, with the inclusion of the public safety pay plan step inclusion into that, I say thank you for the hard work that you and city staff have done to include that in there. To take care of the people that take care of us is important, and I appreciate that. And then the other thing is the effective tax raise. We have to limit the tax burden on our citizens. We cannot keep, we cannot tax ourselves into prosperity. It's not going to work. We need economic development. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. Matt Crutcher?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hand it to the clerk. Yeah, thank you. You're good, sir.
Thank you. About a month ago, we stood before you with a problem. We asked you to solve the problem as you all were the ones who had the ability to fix it. You listened, you actually heard us, and you acted. And we appreciate that. We appreciate how special this is and this relationship. Here are some applications for the police academy, the Citizens Police Academy. There's also some applications for the ride-alongs. I was able to get this changed where now the Citizens Police Academy is going to be on Thursday night, so it doesn't interfere with Tuesday night meetings. So won't have any issues with that. Also, Chief Drew has agreed, when you come do a ride-along, that we'll actually give you a nice fancy, blue, really good-looking vest.
Wow.
Okay, I mean, we got to give it back. Right? Lastly, and really want to let you know, we really appreciate everything you did and thank you for taking the time to listen to us. Lastly, I would like to let you know, I'm sure you already know that this is Police Week, and we thank you for honoring public safety and police officers. We invite you Thursday morning at 10:00 a.m. at Calvary Chapel, Chapel, at 15553 Warwick Boulevard to join us to pay respects for police officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice, as well as their families, their coworkers, and their other loved ones. So thank you all very much. We appreciate working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Matthew Girassa?
Councilman Ely?
Motion carry, 7-0.
Thank you. Page 241, item G3, Mr. Manager. Item G2 is a request- Sorry, G3? Excuse me, item, yes. I have a little sticky challenge. Item G, hold on, let me make sure. Everything going on up here. Yes, item G3. Thank you. Thank you for the correction. Is a request to adopt a resolution in support of closing the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, approving the sale of the facility and its contents by the City of Portsmouth, and dissolving the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority as soon as possible thereafter. This resolution provides the approval of each member's city council for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority to officially cease inmate operations while retaining $3 million for ongoing operations for a minimum of two years to maintain jail records and to be responsive to any outside queries or requirements, including any and all legal and financial liabilities and obligations. The resolution also grants the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority the ability to fulfill all requirements related to the closure, including disposal of real assets, paying off all bonds and other debts and liabilities, canceling or terminated all contracts for goods, services, and utilities. A final dissolution, at, excuse me, at final dissolution, the remaining funds or liabilities will be distributed to the member cities based on a agreed-upon proportional share. I recommend approval, and I also just want to take this brief moment to, if I may, thank Councilmember Harris, all of the council members who have served on the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, the budget staff. This has been a long, ongoing process for all the communities to reach this decision. It has come with great angst, and I also want to include special appreciation to Sheriff Morgan, who obviously has agreed to take all of his inmates back, and he is operating at a full facility. So this is a win-win for all the participating communities, and I just wanted to thank everyone who's been involved in this discussion for probably ever since the pandemic. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity, this opportunity. I recommend approval. Thank you. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, 7-0.
Thank you. Page 263, item G4, Mr. Manager. Item G4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing encroachment upon the 33rd Street and Huntington Avenue right-of-way and authorizing the city manager to execute a revised encroachment agreement between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and 311-33, 33rd Street LLC. The encroachments do not interfere with the safe and efficient construction operation, maintenance, or use of the city's right-of-way, sidewalk, or any other facilities within the right-of-way at these locations. I recommend approval. I recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Page 276, item G5, Mr. Manager.
Item G5 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing an encroachment upon the 29th Street right-of-way and authorizing the city manager to execute a revised encroachment agreement between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and 311 33rd Street LLC. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Page 289, item G6, Mr. Manager.
Item G6 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate a standard project administration agreement between the City of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant-funded citywide pedestrian safety improvements project. The city has completed, has competed for and successfully secured Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds for the citywide pedestrian safety improvements project. The project includes pedestrian crossing improvements for approximately 79 locations at intersections throughout the city of Newport News, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Appropriations. There are no appropriations this evening. We will now move to citizen comments. Item I, citizen comments on matters to remain in council. I will call each name in order appears in front of me. I have zero. Let's push. Our next item is new business. City Manager.
I would like to just once again express my appreciation. This has been my first year working with city council, working with the community, working with the city staff, and preparing your recommended general operating annual budget, and I couldn't have done it without the support certainly of our entire city team, and I just want to say thank you to the budget office, to everyone who has been supportive of this process, and appreciate your engagement with me very much, and look forward to doing it all over again next year.
Yeah, we'll start next week, Alan. Thank you. City Attorney.
I'd like to give kudos to Alan for handling his first budget process quite well. I know there's some stressful moments there, but I think you and Lisa and staff and everybody did a great job.
Great. Thank you. City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Long?
I just want to start by saying thank you. I think Mayor spoke. Thank you for the city, for creating that budget and bringing it to us. Also, to the citizens that came out tonight, I also want to congratulate Chief Rogers for his new role as Fire Department Chief.
We'll clap right there.
I know you'll do an excellent job in this role. I've heard from a lot of firefighters and medics how responsive you are to this, to their, to the ranks, so do appreciate all that you're doing for the city. One thing I want to pull out, the budget was approved tonight, the Chance to Shine Program, which is helping the unhoused and unemployed patrons that come to Four Oak Center to be able to get an opportunity to work for the city, have employment. I know right now we're pushing along with this regional housing study, but in order for this housing study to actually be sustainable, we got to make sure those that are unhoused and unemployed actually have the employment to sustain housing for the long term. So, like Mayor said, where our money is, is where we're really committed, and I know we're really committed. We're trying to help people that are in this situation and get back into society. Also, really glad that we were able to bring back the Summer Training Richmond Program, which is now the Youth Career Program. That is something that we, you know, really pushed for, to make sure that our young people have pathways to careers, so really thankful that we were bringing that back to this budget. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And I would just say, we appreciate you, Councilman Long, and you've sort of been the person for unhoused populations, you and Alan, working hand in hand, and we look forward to, for you traveling, for you learning from other cities and bringing back that knowledge. I would love to see our point in time decrease year over year, so we appreciate all of your support and help with that. Councilman Vick?
Oh, yes, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just first want to start out with my condolences for the family of the Price family for the passing of Ms. Irma Price. She was such a staple in our community, avid attendee of Macedonia Baptist Church for years, and they have always been a community-driven person in so many people's lives in the Hampton Roads area, better for her and her husband Arthur Price, so I want to say condolences to them. Also, I want to recognize our vice chair of our Newport News School Board, Dr. Terry Best in the audience. Thank you, Terry, for coming out, and I'm quite sure she wanted to hear some budget information. And want to thank all the police and fire. I just know my heart goes out to everything you do to keep us safe, keep our citizens safe, and it was, it was such an honor for me to be able to request what you all asked for, the increase, because you are very important to the people that we serve. So, thank you so much, and thank you for your comments tonight. And lastly, I have to thank Curtis, the mayor. You all have been some, not in a negative way, some bulldogs on the budget, to be able to really chime in, to really, you know, get us prioritized to do some things that, for some of us, have been uncomfortable, but we made it through. And of course, our staff, Lisa, Alan, our city manager, and all of you involved in the budget process to help us get to where we are. And I do also have to agree with Councilman Long on some of the things that we did, but I have to thank the mayor and council. I really appreciate for the summer jobs. You all know how passionate I have been over the years about the importance of those summer jobs and giving them the hand up to be able to have a successful life, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for even thinking about having that in my honor, so I thank you for that. And that's all I have.
No, we appreciate all you've done to champion that cause, and I could think of no one better to have the inaugural program back than the Councilman Vick program. So, we appreciate you, and we look forward to the execution of that, that is probably a bad word, the conduct of that, of that program, and I think we're going to have more information through a press conference next week, I believe, about all of the activities offered for our youth during the summer. Next up, we have Councilman Woodbury.
Yes, I'm going to give everybody a break. I talked so much at the work session, I am not going to say anything else. Thank you all for coming. We enjoy having you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Ely?
I just want to thank everybody who prepared this budget. Great budget, and look forward to continue to do great things for the city. Also, I'd like to thank everybody who came out for the midnight basketball and encourage more youth throughout the city. If you know young people, encourage to come out to midnight basketball at two locations, Achievable Dream and Demi Community, Demi Community Center. A lot of the parents excited about it, the youth are excited about it as well, so continue to support that event. Also, I'd like to give my condolences to Ms. Irma Price. Like Tina said, she was definitely a staple in the community. She was my band director when I was at Creighton Middle School. I remember I wanted to play the drums, got a drum set, and Irma put me on the xylophones. So, Irma, members of my church, Macedonia, so much respect and condolences to the Macedonia family as well as the Price family. And I also got my friend from California in the building, Avi. He's in the back. This is first city council meeting, and thank you for coming. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll clap that. We'll clap for that. Councilman Harris?
Yes, and I just want to echo what everybody said on tonight in regards to some of the comments. I don't want to keep you too long, but to Chief Rogers, congratulations, to Fire Department Police Force who came out and been coming out and sharing their information with us throughout the course of the last couple of months and being able to work together on that aspect, and then to everybody who played a part into the budget, putting it together. I know it was some long nights, early mornings, and we are here today and want to move on to next year, as Mayor Jones has already alluded to, and to Alan, city manager, alluded to the regional jail. He had done a phenomenal job behind the scenes over the course of the past few years as, if you recall years ago, the regional jail was not in the best spot with perception of the things that were happening over there, and over the course of the time that I was able to serve with him on it, there were substantial changes in a positive light. It just got to the point where the best move was what was made tonight into closing it down and bringing back those, those people, those utilizing our space here in Newport News for those who need a location. I just really, really want to celebrate two individuals in the North District as they celebrated anniversaries. The first one I want to celebrate is Pastor Peter Evans, who celebrated his 25th anniversary at Colossians Baptist Church a couple of weeks ago. Wasn't able to make his gala, but I did attend service, and to see so many people come out and, and share how much he has impacted their lives over the course of his tenure at Colossians Baptist Church made me feel good, and he also was close, near and dear to my, my family as he eulogized my father when he, when we celebrated his home-going service, so I want to congratulate Pastor Evans on his 25th anniversary. And coming up this week, weekend, I should say, Pastor William Spencer will be celebrating his fifth anniversary at First Baptist Church, Morrison Church in which I grew up, and my father served as a pastor for over 40 years, and he's celebrating his fifth year and has done a dynamic job while he's been there, rebuilt the sanctuary, enhanced the whole aspect of the church grounds, and I just wanted to say happy anniversary to him as well, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, of course, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I'm going to begin with condolences to the Price family as well. Thoughts, prayers go out to the family as they are going through this difficult time for sure, so please keep them in your prayers and thoughts. Second is a congratulations. He didn't say anything about it, which I'm surprised, but someone on here got an honorary degree from Virginia Peninsula Community College, and that is Councilman John Ely. I don't know if he thought we were going to just glaze over that, but I mean, that is an amazing, amazing accomplishment, and he also received Hemalong, Dr. Kilgore. Tell me the name of the award, please.
Hammond, Hammond Award.
Okay, yes, so they are doing phenomenal work with the What's Next Program, and so they were honored, and to be able to witness that was truly inspiring, and kudos to both of you for doing a phenomenal job, Councilman Ely. I too also mentioned, I'm excited about the Midnight Hoops effort that was launched recently. I started off uptown at the Demi Community Center, then went downtown and then came back uptown. I promised some of the youth that, well, depending on if my knees show up, but I promised them that I will also play with them, but I'm excited about what that's going to do for our young folks in the community, especially giving them something to do on those Friday nights in which we know that is critical, and we don't want to waste so much talent just sitting idle and not doing anything, and we want to have a safe place for them to come to. So, I'm excited about that. I don't think you can, you can never give someone too much praise, so congrats again to our new fire chief. I too believe he is going to do a phenomenal job, and we are extremely grateful to have you, sir. And then the last piece, of course, is the budget. I mean, talking about money is always difficult, whether it's at a city level, whether it's with your family, but nevertheless, this, this process, it hasn't just been the manager's first time. This is our council as a whole, first time going through this budget, and so as we continue to improve processes, I know at the end of the day, everyone's heart is in the right place, and so I'm extremely grateful to work with this team, and so in addition to that, I just want to say, Mr. Manager, you are doing a phenomenal job.